Good afternoon. I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. At this time, I'd like to call the December 10th Planning Board Meeting to Order. May I ask everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do any members have any conflicts of interest with respect to any of the items on the agenda tonight?
No.
I believe we have a quorum with four people. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? And I believe we are removing Item PB 1927 Windswept Pines. Seth?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Staff's request that this be removed. From tonight's agenda, we have been trying to get information in writing from the North Carolina Department of Transportation. We're waiting on that input because we would like for you all to see that writing yourselves. So, we request that it's removed. I did speak with the applicant's professional consultant this afternoon, and he was in agreement that we need that input from DOT before -- this was the reason it was tabled. You all asked for that information. We have been trying to get in touch with DOT staff at the division and the district level, and we will continue to do so until we get something that you all can consider.
Thank you. Let's see. All right, so we have that. We're removing PB 1927. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the November 12th meeting minutes? Hearing none will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
So move.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes from the November 12th meeting are approved. We have no old business since that item's been removed. All right. PB 1925, Currituck County.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. You do have someone in the audience that's --
Okay, sorry.
We were all here for that item that just got pushed.
Sure.
So, well, we were just curious, as for us, but there's supposed to be a fine set like that. Will that still be waived until that's addressed then? You know, our extension on --
That extension will continue because, you know, the text amendment is potentially your road to conformity, conformance with the UDO. So, that will continue. And I'm sorry that, you know, this -- we tried our best to get with Department of Transportation. They've been very busy with issues in the southern part of their district. So, hopefully, we can come to some resolution by January, hopefully.
So, the what the staff thought was going to be tonight will now be at the January's meeting?
Potentially. With the issues that they are seeing in -- I can't speak for DOT, but with the issues they're seeing in the little part of their district, they haven't been able to get back with us in a timely manner. And with the holidays coming up, I don't want to guarantee that it will be heard in January. That's our goal, though, to get something back from Department of Transportation.
Am I correct in saying that they should -- there any fines or anything if it does not get resolved in the tax amendments and through this process, it'll be pushed back until it's -- that item's actually heard by this board or the commissioners?
Correct. Until it's acted upon by the Board of Commissioners.
Right.
This is like a stay for the code enforcement process.
Seeing that you have removed it, we don't have any opportunity to speak on that amendment for 27, 1927, and is that just pushed out until January now?
You would be able to speak on it when we put it back on there. Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, I have an indirect question dealing with the driveways with permits. If we're trying to add on stuff, is that specifically going to have to be pushed back too, since like any permits are indirectly related that are being denied for those places because, which they have no bearing with the driveway, but they're being denied because of the issue? For example, if you want to add something in the backyard, a pool, or a shed, or anything like that, people try to go to the right day and get the permit or get denied to do that stuff because of this issue, yet it's irrelevant to the drivers, irrelevant to what else is looking to be done?
I would say that anything until a new rule has actually been put in place would have to go by the current rules, so.
Correct. And the county's Unified Development Ordinance, if you do have a violation on your property, we can withhold permits of known violation, and that's kind of been our policy. And that we know there's a known violation on your property, so, which is why the permit was withheld, and that's been our policy. So, that would need to come to some resolution.
So, then my question on that is like, so, we know Currituck County has a whole bunch of other neighborhoods, old established neighborhoods that are old driveways that are not compliant. So, if they want to go put something in there since they don't have a violation, they can go do it.
Correct.
So, they would approve to the permit. So, because of this now, like, I mean, like, go buy an old house, and then they won't even care about the driveway, just get a permit and go. And then, since we're in a new construction, now we're being affected by it. I mean, it doesn't seem right.
I don't know that that's something we can get into right at this moment, but --
The only thing I would really want to address because of the work for the items that want to get done, now you have to push it back even further. Now, it may not get done in a timely fashion. So, now it's like, now you may take another year before we can get it done.
I would think that you can do anything you want to fit the current rules now. But if you're trying to wait for this tax amendment, it'll have to wait till it gets passed. It may or may not get passed.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we're on to PB 1925, Currituck County, a request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Chapter 2, Administration, Chapter 3, Zoning Districts, Chapter 4, Use Standards, Chapter 5, Development Standards, Chapter 6, Subdivision Infrastructure Standards, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurements for the Purpose of Implementing the Moyoc Mega Site Master Plan, Currituck Station, and Establishing the Plan Development, Currituck Station District, and Regulations. Ms. Bolivar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This text amendment is the final step in the planning process to implement the long-range efforts that our elected officials have done and began in 2012. And in 2012, it began with a small area plan. The Board of Commissioners had recognized that Moyoc area was experiencing a tremendous amount of growth, and so they engaged staff to begin that process. And as I mentioned, 2012, we started the planning efforts for the Moyoc Small Area Plan. That was a two-year process. It ended up getting adopted in 2014. It identified -- that Small Area Plan identified an area, and I apologize for the small map, an area which is now, what we now know as Currituck Station, as an employment center in the middle of that area. And so, that plan was adopted, and subsequently after that, the county commissioned a company to do a market feasibility study for that area. We really anticipated more commercial growth for that particular area. And what came out of that market feasibility study indicated that, yes, there are some commercial demands, but the demands really are residential. So, it included what you're now seeing in this proposed text amendment. As a result of that feasibility study, we then went through the efforts to do a master plan. And that master plan took all the developments that would need to occur in that area through market conditions. It identified 3,000 dwelling units. It identified some commercial, industrial, a mixed-use project. And so, the master plan ended up getting adopted in 2017. And the next progression of that was the Unified Development Ordinance language, which is what you have before you tonight. This has been right at two years. And like I say, this has been a long process, but we're now coming down to the final stages of that. The text amendment that you have before you tonight establishes the zoning district and the associated sub-districts that implements the master plan that we spoke about. The boundaries of that area extend from Keratoke Highway, Virginia Line, Keratoke Highway, West Side, South Mills Road, Northwest Backwoods Road, not encompassing all the lands, but some of the undeveloped lands. The company that we used, used the market feasibility study, in which you generally see with a planned development, and created a development for the, or a master plan for the development of a center, which is where your concentrated development density would occur. That's the center station. Out from that would come multifamily, all the way down to single-family, and then some environmental areas or some much lower density out around the perimeter. Redevelopment opportunities along the highway, and some areas for civic use, school, institutional type uses through here. Wastewater treatment plant being in the center of the project. It also will provide for the development and community form standards. We'll go through those, I hate to say page by page, but I do want to familiarize you with the language. We won't read it all, but we will discuss what it all means. And it also amends section of the existing ordinance that involve the use table, the other design standards, parking and loading, and exterior lighting that will affect all development. And you've seen this table before, but I do want to go over it once again. This new district that will be established, which is the Currituck Station District, it provides for densities for that particular district, and those are anywhere from a half a unit per acre up to about 12 units per acre. And again, these are concentrated densities. When you look at the whole project site of somewhere between 3,000 to 3,500 acres, it's about 3,000 dwelling units. It's right at a unit per acre, but you will have concentrations in these targeted areas of densities that will be greater than that. Opportunities for higher buildings, mixed-use opportunities, some industrial or what they now term advanced manufacturing, which is the fancy term for industrial now, and some redevelopment opportunities in some of these areas that are currently developed and are located along the perimeters of this project. The proposed language will also amend the PDR and the PDM districts. Those are our existing planned development districts that are residential and mixed-use. It will remove the density allocation for a limited service district. Since planned development should be served by water and sewer, they should have full services available. So, that opportunity will be, is suggested for removal with this text amendment. It also establishes what's being termed as the Transportation Corridor Overlay District, the TCOD, and that will require action by the board to establish that district. And that limits developments along Keratoke Highway from certain prohibited uses and activities that might require some type of transportation study. It doesn't really get into specifics of sign sizes and that type of things. It really just looks at some uses that are not intended for this particular area of the county, and we'll talk about those as we get in there. And like I said, some access controls. This text amendment will also look at, and these are pretty much the proposed changes for all of it, and I'd like to, the board has the opportunity, I'd like to start with, if you look in your packet, we'll start with the actual districts. Page 32 of your packet. I'm just going to explain to you what the intent is and what we're proposing for these sections. So, what this is, this is the purpose of the planned development districts. It actually identifies and clears up some of the language. And like we talked during the work session, these planned development districts are really built for flexibility, and we're clarifying that with one of the purpose statements. And we want to make sure that when a project comes forward, that we understand the intended character that's being proposed. So, it beefs up, so although it allows for and clarifies the flexibility in their development design, it beefs up what we're looking for in doing that. It cleans up some of the language as it goes through the general standards. It rewords some of that language so that it's clearer and more concise. As you turn the page over to 34, this talks about the being consistent with the land use plan and other official adopted plans. We want to make sure that that's included in there since we have adopted the master plan for Currituck Station. The other pages clean up some of the inconsistent language. If you turn the page to 36, the terms and conditions, this is one of the most important pieces to a planned development that goes along with the master plan. This actually outlines what terms and conditions the developer proposes for his section or phase of development. And it outlines, all those flexibility pieces are really, really outlined in this terms and condition piece because this is where all of the regulatory portion of their development will appear. The character will be looking for some patterns to go along with their application. Page 38 and 39 address that removal of the 1.5 dwelling units per acre in the limited service district. Page 41 is the beginning of the Currituck Station District. And this is the establishment of the sub-districts and what their purpose is. It also identifies the pattern book, and we'll talk as, once we go through the actual ordinance, we'll talk briefly about the pattern book. It's intended to supplement this ordinance and be a guide, not a regulatory document. As I mentioned, it indicates on here the intended land uses. It speaks to the district area of being around 3,000 acres. We know that by including the Newtown and Junction, that we're getting upwards of, and some of these other, finalizing some of these acres, it's probably more like 3,500 acres, somewhere close to that. 3,000 dwelling units, 250,000 square feet of retail, 300,000 of office, and 1 million square feet of industrial. That's the intended. With the densities that are proposed, the only cap that we have is in Center Station, which is 1,500 dwelling units. The others are based off of density of the land area. Turn to page 43. These are the actual intensity and dimensional standards and intended character for Center Station. That's where your densities are at, give a minimum and a maximum. It's important that if you're trying to concentrate your development in a particular center of the project, you want to give a minimum density requirement. And again, that's where you see 1,500 dwelling units as the max so that it balances out the non-residential uses. The one thing that we don't want to have happen is somebody come in and do a complete multifamily development of Center Station with very limited commercial because that's the intended area for that. And we need to make sure that as projects come forward, that they're maintaining it. Minimum lot widths, lot coverages, all the dimensional and intensity standards. And following through with all of the sub-districts, I won't go through each one of those, but they're very similar. If you turn to page 50, these are the district-specific standards that are specific to Currituck Station. It employs the pattern book under the general design standards. It gives you the information about the importance of the development center, which is Center Station. Provides for connectivity, requires for the use mixing, which is important for planned development. Minimal open space design, the importance of signage, that it be well-designed and communicate a clear message and not dominate the building or the property. Building configuration, it's important that these buildings be located close to the road and provide for a street edge. You're pulling the buildings closer. It becomes more pedestrian-oriented at that point. Building design, and so, in our current ordinance, we have some building design standards for non-residential and multifamily development. But one of the consultants with the architectural firm felt it was important to pull the vernacular of the area. And what they found is what made most of the buildings in the Moyoc area were deep porches, pitched roofs with large overhangs, shutters on buildings, whether they be fixed, operable, or even Bermuda. Dormers were found that broke up these large roof masses. Chimneys even did the same thing. Elevated building foundations, a lot of buildings were not built on slabs. They were elevated up off the ground. And that doesn't mean that you can't still build on a slab. You just have to elevate the slab off the ground so it gives more presence along the street. And the gable masses would break up those long facades, pulling out a gable roof on the ends broke up those long buildings. So, we're incorporating that language in there that are specific to Currituck Station. The overlay, the transportation corridor overlay, this is the section I was speaking to where it has prohibited uses. This would most likely take place with the rezoning to the Center Station Planned Development District. However, the board could take action on that independently through proper notification and public hearing process. They have not indicated that they will do that. It's most likely that it will occur with the application for the planned development district. And those prohibited uses would be adult entertainment, outdoor storage as a principal use, tattoo parlors, vehicle sales and service, both light and heavy. There may be others that come out of this that they'd like to add in there, but those were ones that were recommended by the consultant. And this would apply to Keratoke Highway and South Mills Road, and potentially some other interior roads once they're actually installed. Chapter 4, following up on page 53, gets into the use table. These are what uses are permitted in what districts and sub-districts. So, we removed all the planned developments from the main use table and created a new one for planned developments. And each sub-district, those are all outlined by the same use classifications that we currently have.
Do we have slides for these?
We do not. Accessory use standards. Those, I mean, I could probably pull up the proposed text amendment. Does anybody want me to pull up the text amendment, go through it, or just speak to it? Okay. Accessory use standards, we did the same thing with the accessory use table. That also shows the breakdown by district, sub-district. And then, we have some new language that we're adding in for all new drive-throughs, and it's basically to soften the drive-through lane to the parking area to the street. It creates a landscape median in between the drive-through lane and either a drive aisle or street. It also changes gasoline sales to be oriented towards the side and not be allowed in any of the setbacks. Just clarifies that a little bit more. Turning on to page 68, we relabel the maximum parking requirements, and instead of it saying a provision of up to 170 percent of the minimum, it's just the maximum number. We establish design and layouts for the drive-through lanes. This is clarification. Typically, we apply this anyway. This is just to clarify what size parking space is required for these stacking spaces and the importance that it not impede any onsite or offsite vehicular, bicycle, or Turn the page to 70. It requires that all parking in a planned development district be surfaced with concrete, asphalt, or brick pavers, or an equivalent material. It does not allow for crushed stone or any type of other material as you can typically have with other non-residential development. Because it is a planned development, it is a planned project, it's a higher use, it's more activity, it needs, and it's full service, it should have hardened surface materials for the parking spaces. Curbs and wheel stops, you cannot traditionally, cannot use what you see sometimes as non-traditional stops like railroad ties. It actually provides language in there where you have to use a prefabriced concrete or recycled plastic product, something that's designed to be used for that. It provides for on-street parking as an alternative plan in the areas that we are encouraging Bicycle parking, that's reworded, and it makes it less regulatory, but still requires it. It puts the requirement on the designer to make sure that they have adequate number of area or for bicycles to be parked, stored temporarily while someone's inside. Before, it was regulatory in nature and made it somewhat difficult to determine where and how it needed to go in. So, we're making it so that you just have to have it. It needs to be in a well-lit area. You decide how you want to put that in your project. You decide how you want to put that in your project. Loading spaces. This is something that will apply to all projects. We are now separating out short loading berths and long loading berths. Long loading berths will not apply until your development is over 30,000 square feet. That's the longer-length trucks. What we have now is a 12 by 30 requirement, and that's for all projects. But once you get up to structures that are larger than that, you're going to have longer tractor-trailers. We even see longer tractor-trailers on smaller projects. But it's up to you to make sure you're designing your project if it's a smaller site, that you are able to handle the type of deliveries that you receive. But we're putting the language in there to require it on the larger buildings. Landscaping. The landscaping section, this applies to everything. We're putting in landscaping plan language, what needs to be shown on all plans. Right now, we're, it's difficult to get the same information from all designers. So we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and what we need. And so, it outlines what that is. Perimeter buffers on page 74. It's just rewording that language so it's clear. Adds in planned development for the buffer type application in the table. As you go down to the bottom of page 75, it speaks to perimeter buffers. Previously, this allowed for off-site use of existing vegetation, but it didn't give any guarantee that it would be retained. What we want to make sure of is if you are using that, you can only use 50% of that off-site buffer and that you actually receive some recorded document that it will remain as a buffer. So that everybody's aware of it. Page 76. It speaks to fences and walls. So in Currituck Station, there's a screen wall allowance because you have built-to-lines. Built-to-lines are maximum distances you can be from a street right-of-way. So we require you to be within a prescribed area from the street right-of-way. If you are not, there's a street wall that you can use to offset that. Can be a short masonry wall. If you've been to the Outlet Mall in Norfolk lately and the Chick-fil-A that's on the corner, that's what they have is a street wall along that area. It gives presence on the road. Exterior lighting. It provides for some exemptions if you're doing any type of public monument, that that would be exempt from the lighting requirements. It also outlines lighting plan specifications. We do have a difficult time receiving consistent lighting plans from applicants. So this actually outlines what we need. Page 78 speaks to prohibited lighting. This is something that is proposed just for Currituck Station. And it is something that you want warm lighting in that area, something that would be more in the white light, not the high-pressure or low-pressure sodium or the mercury vapor lights, that yellow light. You want something that's, what you typically see now, what most people are actually installing. The LED lights are meeting that specification. Page 79 establishes a maximum height for residential streetlights of 15 feet. That's typically what you see anyway. That will apply to all development. And it puts the other uses actually in a table. There's no change, although it appears as though it's new language. There's no change. Our current ordinance requires 25 feet as a maximum height for that lighting. It also provides for design standards for pedestrian lights. That's a maximum of 4 feet. Those are normally your bollard lamps. And then, your pole lights along sidewalks would still be 15 feet as well. Page 81 adds South Mills Road to the restricted access street list. So when we look at number of driveways along that road, that now will be included in restricted access, limiting the number of driveways and curb cuts one could have. Sidewalks. This actually cleans up some language and establishes language for pedestrian street crossings and crosswalks. We currently do not have anything. So this identifies the minimum width for crosswalks. Multifamily design standards on page 84. So this is current language that we have, and this would apply to all development. And what it's doing is it's, if you notice on the image on page 85, it shows all the parking internal to the development and the buildings actually line the street. That's in our current ordinance. So we're just putting the language in the ordinance that implements that design. Basically saying you can't park in the front. You need to park behind the building. And this is for multifamily. All your parking would be behind the building and off of the road.
Street parking for multifamily.
The only time you'd have street parking would be in Currituck Station or if you had some alternative plan where you got approval to, you had approval to do that.
This applies countywide.
This would apply countywide, that's correct.
If it's done correctly, you could possibly park on the street in Currituck Station.
Yes.
Gotcha.
It's limited. It has a minimum percentage that you can have as on-street parking. You don't want to provide all your parking on the street. Again, item D, that actually puts text to the image by requiring lots with 200 or more spaces to be provided in bays, as you see in the image. Building placement. It requires that the building be oriented towards the street and the principal entrance be on the street. And multiple buildings should provide or create a street edge. That's implementing the picture. One thing it also adds in here, and this will be for all, is it requires a perimeter buffer between the side and rear building facades of the street. You see it along the rear in this image. You see it along the rear. It would be in those situations where you had a corner unit maybe that you may have to do that with. Page 86 speaks to the facade articulation, and this is a slight change. It will require for all multifamily buildings to have some covered entrance, some covered entryway that implements these pictures and designs. Before, it used to be a feature that you could choose. And now, this will require that the multifamily building actually have at least a four-foot covered entry coming into the building. It then also requires that all multifamily buildings have an elevated ground floor height. This will be required of all multifamily structures in the county and to be elevated at least two feet above the existing or established finished grade. So it could be, if you're filling the site and then you would start that two-foot from the filled site. It could be a back-filled foundation. You could still pour slab, but it elevates it off the ground. Stairs, steps, basically, not stairs, steps down to that so it gives it some presence to the street. Requires that all mechanical equipment be hidden from view and not actually attached to the sides of the building that are facing the street. Page 90. It's into the non-residential or the commercial design standards. This is where it requires parking to be oriented towards the back of the building. We provide language which is found in the Center Station section to address what's allowed in those situations. It reorders some of the language as it addresses the building orientation and entryways that you want them to face the street as well. Addresses single-building development, which was handled on the prior entry. Design features for non-residential development. It speaks to, right now, we require that if you have a building that exceeds 60 feet in length, you have to do that pull-push relief where you pull out the building wall so that it's not one straight, long, flat-sided building. We're changing that to 50 feet. So it's going from 60 to 50. And it's 18 inches from the wall. That's a requirement and not a selection. It takes the glazing component out of the selection item and actually moves that to the thinestration portion where it's a requirement. So depending on your type of, or your layout, your first-floor windows need to face the street and remain visible and permeable. Provides a percentage, which is exactly the same as we currently have. But this actually says it's 30%. Further clarifies it of the first 10 feet as opposed to just 30%. This is language that would apply to all non-residential. It doesn't allow for any overly bright neon or day-glow colors to be used as an exterior building color. And then, page 94 gets into the specific language for Currituck Station as it relates to the community form standards. Talks about redevelopment opportunities. It includes the pattern book. It addresses the master plan and any other adopted plans and includes compliance with other sections of the ordinance. It establishes block-style streets as a requirement for the Center Station charter and Cypress so that you will have very, no cul-de-sacs in Center Station, no cul-de-sacs in the charter, and limited cul-de-sacs in Cypress. So it's, we understand that you will have some, but you don't want to have very many of them. It establishes the lengths of those. And the importance of the blocks is for pedestrian walkability. If you want people to walk more, breaking up those streets into blocks tend to do that. We have language in here that talks about the dead-end streets and the cul-de-sacs and when they are allowed and not allowed. Access and circulation for sidewalks and pedestrian. You'll find wider sidewalks in Center Station. And as you get away from it, it will get down to the minimum that we allow today. But Center Station will have primary sidewalks at 15 feet because you're going to have, hopefully, plenty of room for both on-street activity or right next to the street activities, walking and maybe some cafes or settings like that. Secondary sidewalks would be 8 feet in width. Your crosswalks would be 10, requiring them to be raised or some other type of surface material. Parking requirements. Building orientation. We have very similar language in here as it relates to the building orientation. It does not allow for buildings that are greater than 150 feet in length unless it's considered by the Board of Commissioners and allowed. And there's some language in there as to when it would be permitted. Multiple, multi-building development is very similar to what we have today. It's just reiterated here. Prohibited building materials. It would not allow for the use in Currituck Station of vinyl siding or aluminum siding, any type of metal siding unless it is decorative and used as a building accent material. And those overly bright neon and daygo color exterior sidings are included here as well. Building entrance, it's important that it be along the street. So that's in there. Number of pedestrian entrances, if you have long building corridors and your ability to break that up. A entrance feature, the standards that need to be provided for the building entrance feature. They're very similar to what we have in our current language for shopping centers. The facade amassing, this is where it gets into the pattern book elements and what a building actually looks like and how it's oriented to the street. This speaks to what the building has to. So if you want to look at something and make sure you fully understand it, this is where, this is the importance to the design of the building. I would suggest that you read over those. And it addresses that Currituck vernacular. The base, middle, and top. These are what you typically see with non-residential structures that have height to them. And that base, middle, and top is where you typically see a band that is above the first floor. It could be some decorative band, different type of material. And then, you have the next floors above that. And then, you'll have a cornice cap on top of it that's usually three-dimensional. So it gives you, it breaks up that height, if you will, and gives pedestrian feel to the building. And the language is in there for that. Roof form. It's important that the buildings have, if it's a large building, that it, you break up the masses of that building with smaller sections. That's in there if it's over 15,000 square feet. Very similar to our shopping center regulations. Out parcel development, also similar to our shopping center regulations. Loading, equipment. One thing is make sure your roof-mounted equipment is hidden from view. Same thing with ground-mounted equipment. It goes into a little bit more detail with the use of drive-through services, anything that might have a drive-through. We have a little bit more information in here because you could potentially have these closer to houses in this development. It employs that screen wall. Page 103. We include South Mills Road as one of those roads that could require turn lane if you're accessing more than 40 lots. And then, we get into establishing some definitions to porch or modifying the definition to a porch. We want to make sure that it's actually providing access to a building entrance. We've had some that actually, because the porch is one of those design features you can use for a non-residential development and count it. They've tried to do that and not put an entrance on it. So we want to make sure that that is very clear, that if you're using a porch, it's providing an entrance into a building. The step back, as I was referring to, the language for that and the vernacular architecture. I have all of the statements for consistency and reasonableness and suggested staff recommendation in here. However, this is a lot of information just in the text alone that you probably need more time to review and come back maybe with some questions and some comments that we either didn't address or need to address. So we would suggest that you actually table the text amendment to maybe the next meeting to give you time to fully review all the documents. We won't reprint it for you. So hold on to it. But if you want to take action on it, you certainly can. But it is a lot of information. I know we've been going through this process for about two years now, just on the text. Pattern book is new. I won't go through that page by page. It's pretty self-explanatory. We have noticed some things in there that need to be fixed. So we will get those elements completed and come back to you.
It shows a lot of examples of what you were just talking about.
Yeah, the pattern book is meant to be a guide and it's not regulatory. So it's there is an example of a way that the buildings, we would like the buildings to look. So if you have any questions about that, please ask us.
It really provides for the intended character of the area. It really provides for the intended character of the area, but we do understand that every building in there will not be a replica of what's in that pattern book. And I hope the board understands that as well. It will, it is a guide in which you can be, you have a foundation to begin developing your project. It shows elements in there that could be considered.
So, you want us to think about all this and hit you with questions next time?
I think it would be better for the board to fully understand, and that's why I wanted to walk through those sections with you and give you a little bit of background. I know we went through it really fast. I'll be glad to meet with any of the board members individually. Together, if you have any specific questions, concerns, comments, or you don't understand a particular thing, we'll be glad to do that. We can come back next meeting and go over those.
Okay.
We will still be taking stakeholder input for the rest of this month on this. We have some meetings scheduled later this week with some stakeholders that have been involved in this process up to then, up to now. And we'd like to get feedback from them as well before the board acts on it. And this is a lot of information. It's been a long process. We want to make sure we've gotten it right, that you all feel comfortable with what we've brought before you. So, please ask questions. You can, we can, you take questions from email or, and we can then bring those issues back and tell you how they're addressed.
Couple of months ago, we had a joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners and went over some of the pattern book elements. And I have those on here as well, showing some of the building design patterns and some of the historical buildings that they pulled the elements from. And you can see how they resemble, somewhat resemble. And again, they will not look exactly like this, but it shows you ways because Currytuck Station or Center Station has a requirement that your building be a minimum of 20 feet in height. And that's what you typically see. Doesn't mean that it has to be two stories, but it has to be at least 20 feet in height. So, you've got to have that presence along the street. So, this shows you opportunities and where you can achieve that. It also has street patterns and pedestrian patterns in there and how all of those are incorporated. We didn't specify minimum road lane widths, minimum right-of-way widths in the actual regulation. Those are in the pattern book. The pattern book is meant to be a living document that will be periodically amended, updated to incorporate new sections and phases that will come before you. We want this to be a flexible ordinance and try to work within the market conditions at that time.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for staff tonight? We'll wait till next time. We'll wait.
We will wait.
Do you want to hear if anybody has anything?
Sure.
Okay. We don't have any questions for staff at the moment. You presented, there's no applicant. So, we'll open the public, open the floor for public comment if there's anyone who wishes to speak on this item tonight. It'll be coming back before, it's probably next month to actually hear it again and vote on it. But, if there's anybody that has signed up or wishes to speak on this tonight, you're welcome to come on up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
These documents are actually available for view. If you go to our website and go to the planning board meeting agenda, you can view both the text and the proposed pattern book.
Okay, anyone? All right, we'll close the public hearing. All right, nobody has any questions for staff? We're going to, all right, I'll open the floor for a motion to table this until next meeting.
I'll make that motion to table it.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? We'll on to next meeting. All right, well, that's all we have tonight. So, if anyone has any announcements they would like to make? Anybody? You guys? Everybody happy? Well, this is the last meeting this board will have before Christmas. So, Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy Holidays, New Year. And that's all I have. All right? I'll open the floor for a motion to adjourn. Second? Motion is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.